Welcome to the 5:30 PM, September 10th, 2024. First public hearing on the city's proposed budget. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council should be placed in the box on the table.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. We're going to begin this evening with a presentation by me and then we've also got our water rates consultant that will follow. And then we'll get into the procedures of adopting these ordinances for streetings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. This is the budget process. We did hold a workshop on the 8th of August. The proposed millage rate is five or 6.5817 mils. You're at the first public hearing. The final public hearing will be September 26th at 5:30 here in council chambers. The FY25 budget has built an operating millage rate of 6.87817 mils, which complies with the 10% cap on prior year revenues in accordance with Chapter 74, 430 Florida laws. The millage rate is the lowest levied by the city of Titusville in 16 years. During the public hearing, city council must discuss the percentage increase of millage over the rollback rate, if any, to fund the general fund budget and the purposes for which the ad valorem tax revenues will be being used with the increase. Public comments will be heard regarding the increase of the ad valorem revenues and the millage rate. The millage, the proposed FY25 millage rate is 6.5817 mils, which is 3.59% above the rollback rate of 6.3536 mils, generating $1.6 million in additional revenues. The proposed budget uses these dollars to fund a 3.5% COLA to attract the best in work class. We're also adjusting pay on certain employees, fund the increase in public safety, technology, vehicles and equipment, and fund the increased cost of consumables due to inflationary pressures. City council adopted its strategic goals and objectives, and this is here for your review. And you did add the sixth goal, which is community design. The budget environment, the property valuation is, has increased 11% for FY25. The shared state revenues are up in a moderate 16.7%. The building department activities continue to be increased. Operating and personnel costs have increased 7.2% due to changing workforce environment. The OPEB liability is still trending downward, and there is a $13.3 million unfunded operating and capital needs. And just as a reminder, council asked us to find out what it would cost to do a public safety complex, a public works facility upgrade, and a new city hall. Those numbers in today's dollars, the public safety complex is $45 million. The public works facility is estimated $30 million, and a city hall replacement is estimated to be $70 million, and that's in today's dollars. I'll go through these slides pretty quickly. This is the budget priorities that staff used to build the budget. The budget priorities were introduced in January of 2024 and that continued through. We did make some adjustments with the COLA during the process and the increase in the operating budgets due to the inflationary pressures. Next slide. You do see a 3.5% COLA cost of living adjustment. Next slide. The five-year operating plan shows a 8% increase this year for budget, and the out years 26 through 29, we're hoping inflation will decrease. So we're building those out year budgets at 7%. Next slide. And council, this is one of your guidelines to encourage management, excuse me, encourage managed growth by using low impact development principles as a means of developing attractive built environment while protecting and conserving our natural resources. Next slide. And this is last, this will be the last year we'll be able to use ARPA funds, the $8.6 million. That completes the priorities. The proposed budget that we used at the workshop, there are one change. Two additional FTEs for the CRA were funded with the CRA budget, so we added those back in. As a reminder, five FTEs were added to this budget from the enterprise funds, and we have deferred 16 FTEs until mid-year, 10 of which are police and fire. Total budget of $146,691,741. The general fund makes up $63,000, or $63 million of that. Excellent. These are where the expenditures are programmed. Titusville enjoys the lowest per capita, per resident millage rate compared to our surrounding cities. The only one that's lower is Beavard County. General fund, just the pure millage rate comparisons. And we did change the property tax house this year. So on a homesteaded house with the current millage set at 6.5817 mils, the property is listed at $240,800. And you can see that of that, the school board makes up 38.88% of the tax. City of Titusville is 36.89, and Beavard County is 21.94%. There's also additional taxes taken from the St. John's River Management District and the voter approved debt. At this time, we're going to go ahead and do the water rates, and then we'll get back to reading the first ordinances.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Trevor McCarthy with RevTillis, who has handled our water sewer rate study this year. He'll be going through our rate presentation.
Good evening. Like Mr. Cook mentioned, my name is Trevor McCarthy. I'm a senior consultant with RevTillis. RevTillis has been working with the city for many years, and staff engages us annually to complete a rate study. The rate study entails developing a financial forecast from fiscal, so currently it's from fiscal year 2024 through 2029. We evaluate customers and sales to develop a revenue, to develop revenue projections over that forecast period. We look at operating and maintenance expenses and make projections of those, funding for ongoing capital repairs, rehab and a replacement, as well as upgrades, expansions. So we're looking at the capital plan. And ultimately, the goal is to review the adequacy of the existing water and wastewater rates over this period of time. So part of the rate studies is determining revenue requirements. So revenue requirements are the total expenditures needed to be funded by rates. These include operating expenses, capital projects, the debt service requirements, both existing and the proposed, proposed new debt to fund the capital plan, and the general fund transfer. We also keep in mind maintaining prudent financial policy goals. This includes maintaining operating expenses of at least 90 days of operating and maintenance expenses. Want to ensure compliance with our, with the city's lender agreements, particularly debt service coverage. So the utility has both senior lien and junior lien debt obligations that require certain net revenues be maintained for, for compliance purposes. And we ultimately want to take a balance and sustained, a sustainable approach to rate setting. Meaning, we don't want, we don't, we want to try to phase in rates when we can. And because the city looks at this annually, it really allows, it really allows for ease in that process. Some observations since our last update last year. Customer growth in fiscal year 2023 slightly outpaced last year's assumptions. We're assuming about 105 units, residential units per year in growth, compared to the five-year average of about 135 units. So we're trying to be conservative with our revenue projections. On the operating expense side of things, the fiscal year 2025 budget is about $1.8 million higher than our projections last year. That's, that's worth about 7% of revenues. However, for the first time this year, recognizing that there's a historical difference between budgeted expenses and actual expenses, which, for example, in fiscal year 2023 was about 8%, we've reduced operating expenses from the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget level by 5%. So we're recognizing 95% of operating expenses for, for rate setting purposes. We've, we've also made an allowance for future inflation from 2025 through the remainder of the forecast period. Annually, that's increasing on average about 3.3%. So we're looking at each line item in the utility budget and assigning, you know, what we believe is an appropriate inflation factor. Those inflation factors range from about 3% to 5%. The plan also includes five additional full-time employees that staff has identified from fiscal year 2026 through 2029. So the first major driver of rate increases in, for the city is operating expenses, and the next is the capital improvement plan. So staff's identified about $117 million in capital projects from fiscal year 24 through 29. These are proposed to be funded through a combination of rates, impact fees, cash reserves, grants, and additional debt. Approximately 60% of the capital plan is assumed to be funded with future debt. So we've assumed an additional bank loan and additional SRF loans, one for the water, one for water, one for the waste, for wastewater. This next slide is just a graphical presentation of the funding plan in red there. That represents the projects funded with debt service. It's about 60% of the capital plan. The remaining 40% is funded through a combination of grants and internal sources, namely revenue, rate revenues, operating cash, and impact fees.
So just to jump in for a moment to highlight some of our projects that are continuing as we pass the fiscal year. These ones started in this year previously. Just to give you an idea of what we have going currently, these are larger projects. We have a number of small projects as well, but these are our large ones. Just highlighting, the Morning Dove has a number of projects ongoing, filter replacements, enhanced water treatment, and the replacement of the CO2 system. We have a number of valves being, and water mains underway with replacement. Both sewer plants are currently ongoing screen replacements, and the inner force main project is working its way to a completion date in November. We also have just permitted our first septic sewer project, expanding our sewer system to serve currently septic customers to be converted to sewer eligible. And then we have three force mains in design for replacement. Versat System and Lecito are under design. Additionally, some items that will be hopefully closing up very soon is the replacement of the reuse pump station at Blue Heron and the work on the clarifier at Blue Heron as well. And then just moving forward to next year, we're going to be undertaking some well rehabilitation in area twos and three. So these are older wellfields, looking to rehab them back to better condition on the wells that we've not using as heavily as we have in the past. We continue a number of water main replacement improvements. We do have some building needs at the water plant and field ops in particular, and we have a critical valve replacement at the Cocoa Interconnect. Likewise, on the wastewater side, a residency grain is going to have the baby lift station removed. It's a riverfront station now, and the similar lift station will be replaced in place. We continue to do wastewater collection lining, which was heavily done this year with ARPA, and we'll be looking through two additional areas for septic sewer expansions with soil grants. Additionally, we have de-watering underway for Blue Heron's de-watering system, and the Osprey plant will have some plumbing improvements to the reject tank and the reuse tanks. Turn back to Trevor.
So here, here you can see the projected annual revenue adjustments. For fiscal year 2025, we're recommending 5% adjustments for both water and wastewater rates. This is consistent with our recommendations last year. Just for, just for some historical record, the last several years have been 3% adjustments for, for water and wastewater. For fiscal years 2026 through 2029, we're recognizing a need for greater increases to the water rates. Most of the city's customers are both water and wastewater customers, but we do look at water rates and wastewater rates independently so that we can make sure that the rates for each are being charged equitably among, among those customers. So the analysis is showing that we need to increase water rates a little bit more. How, the, the rate impacts for, for the typical residential customer bill, for a customer that's receiving both water and wastewater service and using 5,000 gallons per month would not increase greater than 5% under those proposed rates that you see here fiscal year 26 through 29. Now, other customers that are using different usage levels of water, or if you have water-only or wastewater-only customers, they would see a different, other than 5%. We're going to review this again next year, and so these values may change a little bit. And we can, and we can provide some bill impacts next year for those, for those differing bills, should we, should the city decide to move forward with a, a different rate increases for, for both of the systems. The reasons for the rate adjustments. The first, keeping pace with inflationary increases in operating expenses. Like I previously had mentioned, operating expenses are up about $1.8 million from where we projected last year. That's worth about 7% of revenues. And the second factor is the funding the capital improvement plan, renewals and replacements and overall capital funding needs. The city's capital plan is, is represented by about a $20 million in capital, $20 million per year capital reinvestment. So that's, that's a pretty robust reinvestment plan for the city, for a utility the size that the city has. So that's a, you know, that's a pretty robust repair and replacement plan. We also want to maintain cash reserves between 90 and 120 days. That's a minimum of 90 to 120 days. This looks favorable to rating agencies, and it's just prudent financial practice. The utility needs cash for, for working capital, and it's, it's a very intensive, capital-intensive enterprise. There's also a need to maintain the debt service coverage requirements and maintain reliable service. And I'll point back on that note to the robust capital reinvestment plan. And we also want to balance cost recovery between water and wastewater rates, and that's what we showed you on the, on the prior slide with the differing rate increases in fiscal years 26 through 29. So a little bit hard to read here, apologies for that. We've got some bill impacts. This is for the tip, the average residential monthly bill, three-quarter inch meter. So this would be your typical single-family home using 5,000 gallons of water. The water bill with a 5% increase would go up about $1.61. Wastewater bill, approximately $2.97 for a total increase of $4.58 at this average residential bill. We've also got an average bill for a, average commercial bill, same meter size, same usage level. The city does have differing rates between residential and commercial customers. That, that bill would increase $5.90. And finally, we have a bill for a one-inch meter using 15,000 gallons per month would see a $16.27 bill increase, again at 5% increase for both water and wastewater. This next chart is a comparison of rates with your neighboring communities. You can see Titusville is right around the average there. The average in this survey is just under $92. The proposed, and again, this is an average water and wastewater bill, 5,000 gallons for a residential customer. The city's bill at the 2025 rates would be $93.70. So just above the average shown here. Again, this is the 24 average. We know a lot of these other cities and counties are going to be passing on rate increases to their customers. So in, in conclusion, it's, it's our opinion that the city should adopt a 5% water and wastewater rate increase for fiscal year 2025 to cover operating expenses, the capital improvement plan, fund and, and fund the anticipated new debt over the forecast period. Based on the forecast assumptions and the estimated rate increases for fiscal years 26 through 29, the revenues based on these rates shown to you today are adequate to fund the capital improvement plan and operating expenses over the forecast period. And the projected rates are also projected to meet the bond resolutions rate covenant, as well as the SRF loan criteria and the financial policies of the city. And thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, I'd like to call member Stokel.
Yeah, I don't know if this is for you or for staff. I think we have a scale of if you use under a certain amount of gallons, you pay this much. If you go over that, you pay this much. Do we, can you explain what that scale is? Is it at 5,000 gallons? Does it go up after that? And my second question is, where are we getting that 5,000 gallons from? Because I was just doing a quick search. I feel like most people use more than 5,000 gallons per month.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have your rate schedule on me.
It does start at 5,000 gallons.
Okay.
So that is tier one.
Okay.
And then for water conservation purposes, the city uses a tiered structure. So the water you use to hire the cost. So it does limit the high usage on things such as watering lawns and things that are potable irrigation. We did survey a number of cities. It varies from 3,000 in some locations to, to a no-tier system. Some communities don't use tiers, which is considered a water conservation effort. So it is variable. I will say that the bulk of our customers do fall in that 5,000, residential fall within the 5,000 range. We don't have a lot in the residential communities that exceed that. There are some, but it's the outlier to the bulk are within the 5,000.
Have we thought about, rather than raising the rates across the board, like the 5%, the 8.75%? We say it stays the same for the five, the tier one, and we just increase the rate, like maybe 15% for 5,000 and above. So then that would, again, strongly encourage conservation and then not hurting all of our citizens. Like we are able still to kind of lower the cost or keep it the same.
We could definitely look into that. Like Mr. Cook pointed out, I think the average, based on the customer statistics we received, was 4,300 gallons per month for an average single-family home. So there's a lot of usage in that first block. And you also have to remember that everybody goes through that first block. So there's not a whole lot of revenues in those upper tiers. You can't collect all the revenues in those tiers. You can't apply all the rate increases and get an 8%. It would be difficult, and frankly, people might change their watering habits, which you want to change watering habits to some extent to incentivize conservation. But that's definitely something that we can look at.
And that also would make our infrastructure potentially last longer too, if you're not utilizing it necessarily as much. The other question, so if we were to not raise the water rate, you know, the 5%, the 8.75, do you have what that amount is? So if it stayed at 0%, and then if it did raise 5%, how, what does that cost? Estimated, and the reason, my question being is, I'm thinking, what if we were able to get some type of state appropriation, potentially to help with infrastructure to offset that cost instead? Is that even feasible?
I, I think, and I can get, I think you're asking about the revenue amount that it produces?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I can find that for you. But I, I would say that in, in the case of the operating expenses, for example, that's going to occur every year. And we've made a 5% downward adjustment from the 25 budget in this plan. So it's already got almost a reverse contingency, if you will, recognizing that there's always a little bit of a difference, usually favorable, in what's budgeted to what the actual results are. So those costs are occurring annually. I think it would have to be significantly more than the amount in revenues that that produces for the capital plan, because the capital plan, again, is, is funded significantly from debt service. So we're already turning that large sum of money to some extent, about 60% of it, as you saw on that chart, into an annual payment, amortizing it over 20 to, you know, 15 to 20 years in, in the case of our, our debt service assumption. So it's really an So it's really an annual recurring.
So if I hear you correctly, these rate increases have more to do with the operating expense rather than necessarily those capital projects?
Absolutely, absolutely. Especially for fiscal year 2025. The city, the utility just issued new debt, and plus with the operating expenses, the fiscal year 2025 increases is largely to cover those two items. Now, if we can reduce the capital plan from additional grants in the future, that could change the picture. But it's not a one-to-one offset for that additional revenues that were projected.
Okay, and my last question is, can you, I think you mentioned that our expenses were 1.8 million higher than we had anticipated? Or budgeted, or can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so to clarify, last year, our analysis was based on the fiscal year 2024 budget, and then our assumption about inflation into 2025. So, what we had projected for 2025, this budget is $1.8 million higher than that projection. And I will mention that,
Okay.
you know, for the last several years, Titusville has passed along 3% increases to rates. That's been well below inflation. So I think that 25 budget really represents sort of a catch-up in inflation over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from council over the water guy? Okay, city manager.
Yes, sir. At this time, the city attorney will read the five ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 282024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Titusville, and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2025, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 292024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budget to the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2025, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 302024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section 21, 241, and 21, 243 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and increasing the schedule of rates and charges for water and sewer service, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 312024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section 16, 116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste recycling and additional cart fees, and by amending section 16, 117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, an increase in the commercial dumpster rental fees, and by amending section 16, 118 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase in the extra charges for special services, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 322024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Program Budget to the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2025, and providing for an effective date.
Required by ordinance to be read, the city of Titusville, Florida is a taxing authority. 6.3536 is the rolled-back millage rate. The operating millage rate to be levied is 6.5817 mills. The percent of increase over the rolled-back millage rate is 3.59%, which is characterized as a tax increase. The voted debt millage rate to be levied is .1936 mills. And staff is recommending that council adopt the tentative millage rate of 6.5817, and the tentative debt service of .1936, tentatively adopt the general fund and related budgets, and tentatively adopt the Enterprise and Capital Improvement Fund budgets. The next step after this meeting is the final public hearing, which is scheduled for 26 September 2024 at 5:30 here in council chambers.
All right, city attorney.
Yes, sir. We will open a public hearing on each of the ordinances tonight. I would suggest, with regard to ordinance number 282024 and 292024, which are the millage and budget ordinances, that we open the public hearing on those ordinances, since they are related. And anyone who does have a card, of course, on ordinance 28 or 29, certainly will be heard on those items as we open those together. And you can speak to both of those items at this time during the public hearing. And you will have time for each ordinance. Following the public hearing, we will then adopt a tentative millage rate first, and then we'll adopt a tentative budget. Then we will move on to the public hearings on the other ordinances.
All right, so at this time, we call the cards, correct? Okay, vice mayor.
You may have said this, but may I ask one question here? On determining the usage for 2023, 25, 23, 24, do we have any way of determining what percentage of that increase is due to new services added, other than inflation? What, if the home or the family usage was not in existence in 2023, 2024, what percentage of the added new residents or new usage, what percentage of the monies that we were short, what impact did the new residents have on that? Is there any way of determining that?
Yes, if you bear with me one moment. So it's about $80,000 a year, that new, the new growth is represented.
New growth, yeah, that's what I mean. New growth is about $80,000?
It brings in about $80,000 in additional revenue per year, roughly.
Okay, but we still came, we still had a shortfall, is that correct?
That's correct. We've layered on growth for the forecast period, about 105 accounts per year, a little bit lower than the five-year average, but there's still a shortfall.
It brought in about $80,000, but how much did it add of usage?
Oh, of usage, so?
Of usage, do you think?
Well, on the residential side?
On the residential side, first?
Each account uses, on average, about 4,300 gallons per month, so.
So you would multiply 43 times the amount of new?
Times the number of additional customers.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Questions? No? All right, call the cards, please.
Dwight Savers?
Hi Dwight.
For the record, my name is Dwight Savers. Together here with my wife, certainly both of us longtime residents of the city of Titusville. I served 40 years as a city attorney and am a retired city employee. We live here in Titusville because we love Titusville and want it to be, continue to be our home. I appear before you to talk about the proposed 2025 budget and the proposed rate hike above the rollback rate. As former city attorney, I've reviewed more than 40 budgets. And interesting enough, many times, we had at least six public workshops all day on Saturday, et cetera. I see you accomplished all of that in one sitting. I certainly have to compliment the city manager for getting you to do that. In addition, I have to say upfront that there may be some things that I say tonight some of you may not want to hear, but I feel as though they should be said. I own two properties in Titusville with my will. And under the proposed ordinances and budgets, my taxes that I pay, the city will go up. Also, the proposed 5% increase water and sewer rate, the 18.5% increase in stormwater, and the 7.5% increase in solid waste. I want to compliment Dr. Sarah concerning her suggestion of encouraging the conservation rate. I think that is a good idea. In my mind, it's certainly a deceptive practice to show how much the millage rates have gone down when, in fact, to me, many residents of Titusville, my taxes have gone up. And that's the reality of the situation. Fortunately, I have saved your homes, but for that, I'm not sure how people on fixed income can necessarily make it. In addition to that, I feel sorry for some of my neighbors whose tax bills I know are $7,000 to $12,000. In some instances, even more. And taxes, together with insurance rates, have created a crisis for many, so budgets are very important. In many ways, I feel blessed because I have a city pension. Since retirement in 2011 at age 67, which is not such a sizable pension at that, my purchasing power compared to 2000?
Give me one more minute. Pardon? Can we extend you one more minute?
Well, what I suggest, I don't know if you're speaking of the millage and the budget. Now, I would provide, if speakers want to speak as to the millage and the budget, and they want to put two cards, I would provide three minutes per card.
Okay.
So we've given him three minutes. I would suggest another three minutes if Mr. Savers is speaking as to the millage and the budget.
Okay, I'll do that. They'll go three minutes, go.
Okay, since retirement, as I said, my purchasing power has gone down by 40% with no cost of living adjustment. In addition, I want to point out that my city taxes during that same period of time have gone up 42%. And certainly, other things like water, sewer, et cetera, have gone up. In reviewing the budget, and look in particular, page 53, I see adware tax revenues have gone up 1.63 million. Page 57, I see a variety of expense increases. And one of the reasons for, I think, the tax increase is retirement contributions have gone up 26.287% or $690,000. Repairs have gone up. IT has gone up. The contribution to the North Bavard Economic Development Zone has gone up 20.87% to $1,240,000. Why has retirement contributions gone up 26.87% or $690,000? Is that because of the management of the plan? Or is it in part because of the significant salary increases that certain people received in the city, and they didn't budget for it, that is, the pension cost, at the same time? Why is that? According to the numbers on page 57, pension contributions is 14.3% payroll, and I've included overtime in that. For most pension plans, you target a payroll approximately 4% to 6%, and certainly not more than 10% in defined benefit plans, and it's usually less in defined contribution. Why is it that we need such much more revenue and taxes? I note, in looking at the city manager's budget, the requirement contribution increased by 17.94%. The city attorney's budget, 20.85%. Why is that? I've received a copy, which was online, of the all-employee salary listing for employees dated March 21, 2024. I think it's quite interesting and quite concerning. It reveals the city manager in 2024 makes about 90 to 100% more than the city manager did in 2011, and we had a well-experienced, long-term city manager then. The city attorney makes about...
That's six minutes.
I'm talking about the budget, and I've asked some questions.
So what are you saying?
I'd rather not have to come back on the... So I'd like more time to finish my presentation.
It was a presentation. So how much more time do you need?
I probably need a total of 10 minutes. And there's six items on the agenda, three times six is 18.
City attorney, come here. This is different than my norm here, so I need some help.
Right, we do, we will open the public hearing as to each ordinance.
Tell me again?
We will, we will open a public hearing and provide three minutes per card for each agenda item. So, yes, each agenda item, there will be a public hearing, and each speaker will get at least three minutes for each item.
Okay, so we, hold on, member Nelson.
So I'm sitting here thinking, is five ordinances, that would be 15 minutes? If Dwight wants 10 minutes?
That's what I was saying, if he's doing it all in one time, rather than hitting up and down, let him just finish.
Four more minutes down there. This is not our, this is not our normal procedure, so I'm a little bit questioning here. I'm not sure how this at all works, so go ahead. Thank you, Dwight.
Okay. As the city manager indicated, he's recommending a 3.5% coal increase for all employees. I note that he's included 3.5% for himself on page 61 of the budget, which would be $7,721. The city attorney on page 60 would get $7,250 increase. You have approximately 78 employees that earn less than $40,000 per year, and they will receive $1,158. Is this fair? They pay basically the same thing for gas, food, water, and other essentials to survive. You have about 228 employees making less than $50,000, and the 3.5% increase would equate to $1,750. Is this compared to the fair across the board to give everybody 3.5%? My suggestion and recommendation would be that you consider giving those employees making less than $60,000 an adjustment of $2,500. And with regard to employees above that, either the same or none at all, because I think there's quite a disparity. I see some employees, for example, the assistant making $100,000 less than the boss. I see other employees, assistant, longtime assistant, making $60,000 less. Have you really looked at the salaries and the budget, and how it is in this budget, and has, has been for some time? In addition, I would like to respectfully suggest, with regard to the zone, that you look at it again. In November, excuse me, September 2022, I appeared before you. And at my appearance, when I finished speaking, I was called back up to the podium by Mr. Jordan, who said, "You have made false statements about the grant, and you are putting out falsehoods, and you are definitely not telling the truth." And in particular, I was talking about the grant to Riverwalk Apartments of adware tax dollars of $2,224,295. I did not feel as though you had complied with your own regulations. One of the documents I've given to you, which wasn't disclosed to you in any of the reports by anybody, that says, "This is your policy, this is your ordinance. The cost of trunk line extension, when required for the development of a site, shall be paid by the developer, not by the zone." In addition, if other properties are benefited, they shall pay their proportionate share." That's what your ordinance is saying. You didn't follow your... You didn't follow your policy and your ordinances whatsoever. Why this wasn't pointed out to you, I don't know. In addition, in the budget of the $1,230,000 for the zone, $800 and some thousand dollars is going to be paid back to that developer. Is that right? Is that fair in accordance with the law and your own ordinances? Why don't you, why aren't you following your own ordinances? Wouldn't the general fund love to have $800 and some thousand dollars, which it should have? I would respectfully suggest, in addition, I find that... That's it?
That's 10. You want to take another minute, because you look like you're kind of concluding. I'd like to hear your final conclusion there, kind of put it all together.
I'm trying to. I ask you to look at the zone. I was ignored by everybody.
And I'm writing that down. That's how I get them, too.
And frankly, you have a new county commissioner, you will. You're going to have to look at the zone whether you'd like to or not. In addition, I think it's highly irregular, unusual what's been happening. It's just, it's still happening. For example, one of your council candidates gave Mr. Jordan a campaign contribution, that is, the CEO or manager of the Great Outdoors. And in turn, and I have the language, Mr. Jordan makes a motion to give the Great Outdoors $400,000 for irrigation improvements of a private golf course using county's own dollars, but we're all county taxpayers. That's not right.
All right, Dwight, thank you. Next card, please.
Lori Severs. And just to verify, are we doing six minutes or since we're doing two ordinance?
It won't take me six minutes. My name's Lori Severs. I live in Titusville. I've lived here for 45 years, and I'm Dwight's wife. I appear before you tonight to talk about the proposed 2025 budget and proposed tax hike above the rollback rate. The city manager states in his budget message, and it was stated in the presentation at the beginning of this meeting, that the strategic plan adopted by council is a roadmap for staff in building the budget and allocating funds. One of the goals stated in the city manager's budget message on page two, as stated in goals four and six, is to, quote, "Encourage managed growth using low-impact development principles as a means of developing an attractive built environment while protecting and conserving natural resources and green space," end quote. Of the last 10 development projects that have been approved, how many of them have used low-impact development principles? When Dwight was on P&amp;Z, they recommended that on each project, where possible, at least 50% of the retention be designed using low-impact development principles. Staff rejected that recommendation, and council accepted staff's recommendation, only encouraging the use of low-impact developments instead of requiring it. Are you meeting your goal, or do you even know whether you are or not? We own property near the 300-unit apartment complex known as the Registry. Before it was withdrawn, before council heard it, as designed by your engineers, Kemley Horn, and they did not utilize low-impact development. Certainly, neither Tranquility nor Riverwalk Apartments have utilized low-impact development at all. Another goal you stayed in the budget is to preserve wetlands. In the last eight years, how many acres of wetlands have been destroyed? With the changes in the comprehensive plan and ordinances proposed by this administration, the advent of planned development land use and zoning, which allows building on wetlands, and the enhancement of density by those changes, it has led to more destruction of wetlands. Are you achieving your goals, as outlined in the city manager's strategic plan? And if not, how does the 2025 budget help achieve those goals? And I have one additional thing to answer. My husband worked for this city and did his very best for 40 years as city attorney. And the people that were sitting on this podium, when he was called a liar by Robert Jordan, need to apologize to him. It's the most unbelievable and egregious thing I have heard ever. Thank you.
Okay, next card, please.
Kristen Lorti.
Good evening, Kristen Lorti. I will take the six minutes for both of the items.
City Attorney, I'm sorry.
I will accept the six minutes for both the millage and the budget items, just so we're clear on time.
There you go.
Good evening. I am an advocate. I talk regularly in several meetings, and I, this is one of the meetings I speak at. I look at practices in Central and North Brevard, and so some of my comments will have that in mind as a non-Titusville resident, that I am an individual who cares greatly about Titusville and who is very interested in your city. So, one of the questions that I ask myself when, as I'm going through the budget season is, how can a person be familiarized with the budget? How can they be acclimated? How can they learn about the budget? I speak frequently about transparency issues and access issues. One thing that I've already noticed tonight is that the presentation that was on at the beginning is not in your meeting minutes, in your meeting agenda items, they're online. And I'm appreciative that the city has now gotten the packets online in bulk, but now I am finding out that they are not complete. So I'm not pleased with that. The public should have had access to that presentation as a part of the materials, and it sends a message to myself and other residents that now we have to circle back with the city clerk and, and get more materials that are not online. Secondly, the budget itself is not hyperlinked in the agenda items. So there is a website that has a portion of the city website that has the budget. It is not in the agenda. So someone trying to get informed would need to know that the proposed budget is in a different place on the city website. That is disturbing for people who would like to be informed and who would like to work with facts. As Ms. Stokel and Ms. Nelson have spoken about at the last meeting that I watched, facts and accurate information is important. So my encouragement to the city is to do what you can to improve that and take very low-hanging fruit of just helping your citizens get informed. So I'm starting with the presentation materials itself. Next, I want to talk about what's actually in the budget itself, the millage, and I am not going to comment directly on a for or against a tax increase or not increase for the millage. My concern and my petition to council has to do with the level of service that is provided within the budget, and which I have brought up numerous concerns about the level of service that is provided to residents. For example, I sent this all to you in April. This is, it was inside of a, of an attachment, and it has 15 opportunities that the city could do to enhance and expand access. This is without requiring a public information officer or person to help you message things. If you want to help people get facts out, I have taken the time to craft this item in the midst of several other emails and attachments of the city to help people get informed on transparency issues. This is a helpful document. One of, you have done, to your credit, you've done one of the things in there. There's one of the opportunities, which is to get the public documents online in bulk. But what about what the rest of Brevard is doing and why I report that Titusville is one of the least transparent cities in Brevard County? Because the rest of the county actually has online meeting materials that you can go up. You can see, you can go to attachments, you can do research, you can go to various, you can see an agenda item, you can see all the attachments to the agenda item, then you can go and you can see the link to the video. It's all right there. And sadly, the council members and the residents of Titusville don't realize that they're missing out on this. This is a level of service that the city can provide. Now, who do you have to provide this service? This is, that's, that's one big thing that is in my advocacy. Another big thing is your live streaming of meetings, which is an ongoing sore point with residents, with myself, with non-residents. People want access to your meetings. So what you've done this year, and is, is to your credit, now we have 50% access to the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings. So people are glad that we have some access. And I was talking to a Titusville resident this morning, and I said, "You know, it's a little bit like walking barefoot, and someone gives you one shoe, and you're happy about the shoe, and that foot is a very happy foot that has that shoe on it." But the other shoe, the other foot now is extra unhappy because it wears no shoe. And so if people seem a little bit crispy on some of your moves forward, it's because there's yet ways to go. And as of last night, the citizens, as of 5:25 last night, I wasn't even sure if this was the meeting that was going to be the month, the happy month that got recorded. This is completely unacceptable. It's not even written on the agenda item that this is the one of the every other month meetings that is being recorded for the benefit of the public. These are very low-hanging fruit, requiring zero extra dollars to just inform people. Now, what about the other meetings? That we might have to have a staff person there, we might have to have our AV person there. Well, the city of Titusville has 13 people, and its IT department spends over, sends $3.7 million, and it's not all dedicated to the live streaming of the meetings, but you certainly have, you certainly have help with this. This is not asking you for extra money in the budget. The clerk's office has over $800,000. Last, in just 2022, it had $600,000 to work with. And we are having trouble getting access to meetings and online meetings. What is going on? Why can't we have the access that we want? Why is it so much effort? Oh, and I have to make sure. This...
Go ahead, pinch that.
This is my souvenir. I hope that Titusville never, ever hands out one of these, ever. This is the CD that I was required to purchase, and I'm happy to spend 25 cents for the CD. You're welcome, and thank you. This CD signifies everything that's currently wrong with Titusville. You are handing out outdated, archaic technology. Fortunately, Christopher Childs in this room helped to put this online for me, which the city could have quickly done, and he did in five minutes, and Ms. Conklin picked it up for me because I don't live in Titusville. This CD should be a relic of the past, and I should never, ever be able to bring one to another meeting. You are feeding the narrative of those people that you think are naysayers by simple actions like this. This is my souvenir. I will keep it. I will march it all around the county until this ends, and you start live streaming your workshops, and you start making all of them available and following your strategic planning that has been butchered over the years because you decided to take out the goal of having all of the meetings livestreamed. So I shall wrap it up. Thank you, thank you for...
Thank you.
Humoring me in the comment, but this matters. These things get reported on. These changes need to be made. These do not cost, this is not expensive changes. Level of service, level of service.
Must say it's a good visual. It says a lot.
Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Yep, Member Nelson.
Well, one, can I, unless you need it, can I have your piece of paper?
Yes. You may have my piece of paper. You betcha.
Okay.
I'm actually going to give you my 2022 email with it, because I've been crewing about these things, not just in election season, 2022. Go ahead.
Second, realize that we took all the information offline because of an attorney, hate to say this about our brethren, was going around the state suing all the cities for ADA compliance.
Very aware of that. I have studied it extensively. I watch the city managers and the attorneys' comments on that, and none of the other cities are letting that trouble them. Their meeting minutes, their, their agenda items are all online, but I hear you. I followed up on that.
And realized that we had some guidance, and when you started talking, we decided to go with that. So that was a really...
Anxiously at wait, having you guys join the 21st century.
I think you were at the meeting when we voted and said, "Take a shot," because I think you guys were saying, "Hey, everybody else is." So, yeah, we had an attorney problem, but I think that, as you said, I think we're moving past it and see what happens.
I look forward to having better reports in the future, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Appreciate you. Next card.
Antoinette.
My name is Antoinette Legori. I own several rental properties here in Titusville. I have lived in Titusville. I currently live in MEMS. I am opposing the new millage rate as the taxes are just going up, up, up. And this is money coming out of my pocket that I cannot charge my tenants. We are in an inflation period right now with insurance rates. I just can't afford to pass all of these rates on to my tenants. I will have vacant units. If these rates continue, as I have right here, last year, they went up. They went up again in '23, '22, '21. The only time that there was a rollback was in 2020. If the proposed taxes go, go ahead and be voted on, my taxes are going to be going up over the course of my four properties, over $1,500, and I'd like to know who is going to be paying that bill. I, like I said, cannot afford to charge each one of my tenants the difference in the tax bills, and the, like I said, the insurance on all these rental units keep going up. People are losing their jobs. People can't afford to buy groceries. I drive through the city of Titusville every day to visit my rentals, to work on my rentals, because I can't afford to have maintenance people come to take care of my rentals. And I see guys that work for the city of Titusville leaning on shovels for 15, 20 minutes, standing there smoking cigarettes, driving new vehicles. I don't drive a new vehicle. I can't afford to drive a new vehicle. I think that this, I think that all of this needs to calm down. I think everybody needs to take a new position on all of this, and I think that we need to roll things back to square one, to at least where it was last year. People cannot afford this. People are on fixed incomes. I'm in my 60s. I can't continue to do what I'm doing and make the little bit of money that I make off my rentals, which is not nearly enough. I'm having to get a second job, plus having to work on my rentals. So I am working literally seven days a week. So this is not fair to the people that are, that own properties here, people that live here. I live in Brevard County, up in MEMS, and my tax rate is a heck of a lot lower than what it is here in the city of Titusville. And I get more services from the county in MEMS than what my tenants get in the city of Titusville, but yet these tax bills reflect a heck of a lot more than what I am paying on my property up in MEMS, and I have six acres of property up there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next card.
Susan Copeland.
Hi, Suzanne Noel Copeland. I'm a Titusville resident. I had just a few questions and clarifications about both of the items, I guess. One question is, on the multifamily residential, it's not clear to me what that is, is that duplex, quads, apartment houses, apartment complexes? What is the qualification there? At some point, does an apartment become a commercial property? You know, and why are the rates different? The other one kind of goes to the gallon usage. The commercial gallon usage is a flat rate for all gallons under the commercial item on page, I guess, 10 of 27, and that gallon usage is below the standard of the 5,000 gallons that you're saying, you know, a residence uses. So I was wondering why that is lower for the commercial and industrial usage. Other than that, let's see here, the, the reasoning for the increases looks to have stopped on page 13. Pages 14 plus are what the increases are way more than 5%. These are for things like cross-connection control programs. These are increasing 33%, 49%, 60-something percent. So I don't know why we didn't have an explanation of these costs or increases. Same with the items on page 19 that are going up 33, 121% in... Same with the items on page 19 that are going up 33, 121% in some instances. And then also on, when we get back to the recycling, all the recycling is going up 23%. So I'm just looking for reasons why, you know, the increases are wide swings when what was explained was it's going up an average of 5%, which only really talks about the water rates. So it, it just, I'd like to have a better understanding of what those other increases are.
Kevin, you want to comment on the, any of that? Is there a?
Yeah, sure. So the, one of the questions was commercial rate versus the residential rate. So commercial doesn't utilize a tier, so they're all charged as a single tier, and it is a higher base rate. So commercial industrial charges start at 481, where a residential three-quarter meter water user is at 382. Water also doesn't cap. It's sewer side, where residential is capped at 15,000. Commercial pays the full freight of both water and sewer throughout the tiers. They also enhance, they have an enhanced meter charge. Commercial customers have a different usage of water, so they do have a higher meter rate. The other charges that were discussed when it comes to cross connection control programs, that listing is for the installation of new backflow preventers. That is the actual cost to our crews to install a backflow preventer. So if we have to reinstall a backflow preventer for a commercial property under cross condition control, we pass that cost through dollar for dollar, no labor. So we've adjusted those rates. They weren't adjusted a year ago. So this is bringing us up to what it actually cost our field ops crews to provide the service. Normally, that is covered by the customer. They don't, usually don't ask us to do it, so they pay a plumber to do it, and they have that option of paying their own cost. Then there's two versions of that. There's a regular DCVA, and then there's the vacuum breakers, RVPA. So there's two different items. The actual assembly monitoring fees are unchanged. That's again, a pass through a contractor we use to monitor all backflow preventers, which is a life safety welfare of the public to prevent contamination entering this, the water system from a commercial customer. The final items are meter charges. Again, this is a re-up to the actual cost to install a meter. Previously, it was $334. We are already paying $445 per meter. So the city is absorbing the $110 currently in the current year, but we are adjusting to make up for that next year, to make it dollar for dollar for what it cost us on our last round of meter purchase. So, but that's the adjustments. Now, those only affect a new customer coming online for the first time they get a meter. That's not a recurring cost. The 5% are on recurring charges. These are on fixed charges that affect you when you buy a new house, gets a new meter set, you upgrade to a new meter. Those costs are separate as part of the application for service. They won't carry on to the bills. The billing is the, what we talked about is the 5% on each side.
And I hope that helps. And you can see he's the expert, and I know he'd be glad to give you his card for further answers as needed. So if you want to do that, Kevin, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Next card.
Tony Schifalo.
Schifalo, Tropic Street, historic Norwood House. I've been coming to the budget workshop hearings for a number of years. My folder goes back to 2020. And I have documents even before that. But I still don't understand the process particularly well. And so I'm here to just talk about two things in particular. And I wonder, where's the real line item budget where you can see where things are actually designated for particular things? Like in public works, road maintenance, tree planting, tree removal, that kind of detail. I wasn't sure where to find that. I want to remember that I was a research librarian before anybody could Google, back when you had to go to the library and ask the librarian to use the LexisNexis and stuff. So I'm not real naive to searching around, but, and it's probably there, but it wasn't easily accessible, which brings me to the second thing I want to talk about. I was digging through and looking at the budget, trying to find out where perhaps it was that the IT guy would switch the video to livestream all of the TEC meetings versus just half of them, how much it might cost. You know, how much does it cost him to, to do six of them instead of 12? That's the kind of line item stuff I was looking at. So I'm thinking that maybe education of the public is really important. And Tuesday night, y'all touched on the idea of hiring a public information officer, which don't do that. That's a wrong approach. There are so many things in your budgets and in your goals and objectives and strategies to educate the public that are not being done. At one point up until 2023, under the city manager's effective governance, was eight public workshops a year. And then when the public started attending them, Miss Stokel, they dropped off the charts. We no longer have them on the goals and objectives. So I think that was kind of strange, and I'd like to see that happen. One of the effective governance things that was under this year's for year 25 was to continue to broadcast advisory board meetings, expanding the broadcasts when appropriate. I would think that after two years of Ms. Laurie coming up from COCO, for heaven's sake, we would throw the switch on all 12 of those meetings so that we would stop hearing that. It is appropriate to broadcast to the public because there is an interest out there. You don't need a public information officer to do that. And so I was looking under community relations, and, and there's this line item, 4801, promotional activities, that eight departments out of the ones listed throughout the budget, you know, where they itemize each department's things, eight departments get this promotional activities. What is that for? Because some of them, like poor planning, they're getting it for the first time this year, but it's only $103. But the economic development, they're getting $90,000 this year, which is an 8.48% increase over last year. So what are those promotional activities? Those could be used to create fun activities throughout the communities where we could have staff, perhaps, citizen advocates. Can you imagine the trees that could be planted on private properties if you let K St. Ange get out there into the public and start talking about it at some event? Why don't we tag on to the events that, well, there aren't that many events. Why don't we create events? So I was looking through the line items. I'd like to see that, too. Art, there's nothing going on for culture and art in the Titusville budget. And I'm not going to take up anybody else's time. I just wanted to get those things out there. The 2%, or the $2 per capita for tree planting and money for fun things, art. The people want to do things in this town. They don't want to have to go to Melbourne for everything. I miss out a lot because, well, I don't miss out a lot because I play a band and I get hired to go a lot of places, but not every citizen gets to do that. And I have to leave town to play. There's no place in this town that hires my band.
Thank you, Tony.
So, Tony.
Tony, come back.
I'm just going to say, one of the reasons for having public relations, we would call it a public information officer, was, like I said last, the other night, people ask me if the river is dead. And I hear it over and over again. And the river is not dead. It's not where it was, not where we want it to be, but it's looking a whole lot better. And so I wanted to make sure that the citizens were informed about things. So it's more, this is what's going on, and I hope at some point we, we actually do that. Because I think it would be great for the citizens to have somebody they could contact. You know? I have a question. How's the sea grass doing in the river? How are the clams doing in the river? Having Captain Wiggins here. I mean, 22 years on TV with a fishing program, not that I watch it, but, yeah, I don't watch. But, you know, you would expect the sport fishermen to be packing this place and saying, I want to hear from him. I want to hear what he's doing.
Well, maybe City Hall isn't the place. A lot of people are intimidated. You notice, I'm not, but a lot of people are. And that's why I say taking things out into the community. Even if you just took the big pavilion at Sandpoint Park and had a, had a Saturday afternoon meet a dolphin, and you had somebody dressed up as a, you know, you don't have to hire a person to do that. Don't we have people on staff in public service?
Yes.
And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm sure they don't want to take on the extra duties, but there's a woman in the fire department that does that. What is the woman's name that does?
Carrie.
Yeah. She's a professional clown, for heaven's sake. Send me out there. I juggle. People would come and talk to me, and I could talk to them about the river.
Well, National, National Night Out is October 1st. Talk, talk Amy Matthews. Talk to Amy Matthews.
All right, next card.
Christopher Childs.
Christopher, hey, Christopher Childs, 5627 in Channet Avenue. Yeah, so I did help with the CD thing. I think, I'm a tech guy. I'm a software engineer by trade, and, and I think there are a lot of things that we can leverage as a city for with technology. And I think, I think we're already heading that way with like the AI program for planning. I think that's a great start to pilot that. For the, for the audio that they put on the CD, that's a really, that's an easy thing now that you can do is put up audio and convert it to a video. You just put like a black background on it. It takes less than five minutes to convert it and then upload it to YouTube. And that makes it not only saves you money and staff to, to put it on a CD and, and then also answer the calls and, and emails about people requesting it, but then it also helps that they can just get it online, just like they can for these meetings or the planning and zoning and, and the TEC. And even if you didn't record the TEC meetings, you could at least put the audio up there really easy. But it literally takes five minutes or less. But I also think that using consultants for like the tree list, the shrub, you know, shrubs and tree lists that we did, I think, I think there's a lot of people who have PhDs and stuff and who are volunteering, and they come to these meetings, they come to planning and zoning. I think if you had the program to allow them to bid, and not, not for money, but bid to work on it, same deliverables, same timeline, they can have, you know, and, and they can come back and give you a list instead of spending money on consultants. I think that'd be a, a good saver, too. But, yeah. But I think those things and, and to drop the lawsuit for the right to clean water, that will save money, too. So.
Go ahead. Yes, please do. I'm sorry.
Mr. Childs.
Yes, sir.
You're a businessman. How do you, when you are as a businessman, how, when you ask a volunteer to do something, are they always there to do what they promised you that, that they were going to do?
You mean, can you count on them all the time?
Absolutely. Can you? I'm just asking that. Can you count on a volunteer all the time?
I think in business, I have interns that I could count on. I had interns that I used that were.
Volunteers that you.
That did not pay.
Determine your business output on volunteers.
I did. I did. At one of my companies, I did. We, we had two interns that were going to college for, for programming that we had them work on.
Some internship, yeah.
Yeah, internship, yeah.
I'm telling you, just that. A volunteer that you depend, depend on five days a week to do a lot of things that you would have to pay an employee $15, $17 an hour to do. And then they're going to volunteer their time and say that they're going to be there at 8 o'clock in the morning so that you can meet your business schedule and they were there.
I don't think your consultants do that. I don't think the consultants are here all day. I don't even think they work here, right?
You build a business, you know, I've been in the nonprofit. You build a business on simple volunteers that do all of the things that.
Yeah, I don't think you build a business.
You wouldn't build a business on volunteers, would you?
No, no, it definitely would. Supplement, for sure.
We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Joe, except for me.
You and I are special.
I make a great volunteer.
I'm not sure where we went with that, but we'll move on. Next card.
Nathan Slusher.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Nathan Slusher. I live at 860 Allendale Street. Here as a citizen of the city tonight. For once, listen, I've been doing this for four years, coming to these budget hearings. For once, I would like to show up to one and have a presentation with a proposal for reduction. And I know I'm not alone. Now, I'm not asking for something dramatic. It could be a 1% reduction at this rate because some of us would like to see the usage, the rates all go backwards even slightly. We have been pushing forward year after year after year. The first time it came was in 2021. And then we had to raise rates because building materials were up because of COVID. The next year, it was because of inflation and so on and so forth. Every year, there's a reason. There will always be a reason from here until the end of humanity. There's always a reason for more. What I want to see is somebody to say, no, we're going to hold on. I came to this meeting specifically because this isn't a final hearing, and I want to give you guys something to actually think on in the next two weeks and maybe, just maybe see if the staff can help look at the numbers on what it would look like if it was done differently. We have heard every year that those that are homesteaded won't be affected, but that's not true. Maybe not directly, maybe they won't directly be affected, but when the cost for rental units goes up, the cost for goods and services go up. When the cost for goods and services go up, COLA has to be increased for us to keep up. When COLA gets increased, we have to raise taxes. When we raise taxes, the cost of goods and services go up. This is a perpetuating cycle that only you five can stop. And for once, I just want to see it, a tiny reduction, and I'll celebrate that we just even tried to go in the correct direction. What I'm asking specifically is when you look at the charts that are shown, our proposal is at 6.58, our rollback is at 6.35. Put a tentative at 6.0. See what it comes back at on September 26th during the final hearing. This is tentative tonight. This is not final. If you put it at 6.0, you're going to get the mathematics and we're all going to get to watch it. Can the city function on that? Can we make adjustments? Can we find alternative funding? You talked about alternative funding already. I think we can, and I think our citizens would like it. I have been out knocking on thousands of doors this year, and our top three concerns are Indian River Lagoon, affordable housing, and property taxes by the city of Titusville. Two of them you are affecting with this vote tonight. You could argue you're affecting the Indian River Lagoon with it, too. I really would like to see us put a tentative at 6.0, see what the mathematics come back at, so that the citizens, when they watch this on September 26th, can see how it plays out. Maybe it's possible. If you go back on this chart that they put up there, the very first pie graph that hit showed that 51% of our budget is not military, it's services and charges. 51%. Now, our budget is $146 million. It's a big budget. But at what point do we as leaders go, wait a second here? Maybe we should breathe for a year. The last time we did it was in 2020, and we didn't go backwards. All we did was stay the same with the rollback. And since then, inflation and economics have changed everyone's course of life. That's not your fault. That's not our fault. That's the US in general. That's the world in general. Life changed after COVID. But at what point do we stop and say, let's take a step back here? This year has been crazy wild. Everyone has seen that. Maybe our citizens deserve just a moment of peace, just one year. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Vice Mayor.
I, I, I know you're not old enough to understand this question too much. Do you know how much a loaf of bread cost in 1963? 64?
No, you're correct. I'm not old enough to understand that.
A quarter, a quarter, quarter in 1963. Now, but you can tell me how much a loaf of bread costs now, right? Approximately $3, $3.50. of bread costs now, right? Approximately $3, $3.50. You know what the difference in the cost of a bread, loaf of bread in 1963 is? You would say probably $3. But in reality, a loaf of bread still costs the equivalent of a quarter of 1963. Because of inflation, because the value of that dollar has gone down. And that's when you making a budget and when you putting things together, you have to take that into consideration. I'm not, I'm not in disagree. I'm, I have rental property. I understand all that is being said. But understand that when you're putting a budget together, you put it together on the, on the cost of goods for today, not based on what you think a dollar is worth. Because you use the term inflation, the dollar is still, is still worth about 25, 35 to 25, uh, 25 to 35 cents. That's what a dollar's worth. And you have to build things around that and understand the goods that you used to get for $2 last year, three years ago before the pandemic, you can't get those goods and services today for the same cost. Always keep that in mind as you're putting together and you're making your concern. Yes, water has gone up, things has gone up, everything has gone up. And if you want to meet the needs of the individual, you know, or the residents of this city, you have to make sure that you have the financial resources and that's going to look like is really going up. But in reality, that what's happening, the dollar is just not worth as much as it used to be. Keep that in mind as you make your request. Okay?
Member Nelson.
Miss, oh.
Hold on, you want to say something?
I was, I was going to ask if I could. I don't mean to interrupt you, madam.
Go ahead.
Mr. Robinson, I greatly understand what you're talking about inflation. Four years ago, in this very room, a handful of us that are in here tonight, sat in front of you as you discussed taking money from the federal government for the funding for COVID. And we told you if you did that, you would cause inflation. You, as in local governments, not you as in Titusville, local governments were the number one collector, number one in the entire country for all of the federal funding that came with COVID. Not the big companies, not the individual citizens who got a thousand dollars here or there. Local governments, we drove inflation and now we are putting up budgets because of inflation. We cannot continue to charge our citizens for a problem that we created. It's just morally incorrect.
Member Nelson.
Okay. Nathan, can you take two deep breaths?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I came straight from work. I'm excited.
Okay. Two deep breaths first. Okay. That's one. I'm waiting for the second.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Okay. When I ran, Sarah ran, Dan ran in 2016, one of the things, one of the reasons we ran, I did not want to run. I wanted to stay home and play. Um, and I'm still here. So obviously I'm not having quite as much fun. But one of the reasons we ran was because of the river, for the lagoon and for our infrastructure. And I remember talking to a guy who was on council that worked for the water department. And what he told me was when we had the huge sewer spill, that after that, we got fined $20 million, 1994, I think it was. And he was like, after that, city council would not spend money on infrastructure. So now we're dealing, 2016, we're dealing with infrastructure that's 20, 30 years old. Some of our infrastructure is even worse. And I look at it and go, if we don't fix our infrastructure, that's impacting our lagoon, the septic tanks that are out there. We're impacting our lagoon and we're hoping to heal it. But if we don't fix that, we don't fix our sewer pipes. All they're doing is leaking. Last sewer pipe that, that broke was over on Indian River Avenue. It was a pipe that was probably from the 50s, cast iron. So you know it was old. And so a lot of what we've talked about and a lot of what we're spending money on, and I agree with Mr. Severs, we, we can look at some of that. But a lot of what we're spending money on is infrastructure. And I think that's a lot of Kevin's budget and it's something we, we have to do. You know, citizens want the Indian River back and I do too. I do too. I went out, what, two, three weeks ago, um, kayaking with a bunch of kids, against my better judgment, and saw sea rats all over the place. And I was like, yay. So as we go through the budget, we are thinking about that, but we are really thinking about the river. So.
And I absolutely understand. I understand infrastructure because my house has a giant trench in the front yard because we are doing cast iron pipes at this exact moment. So I am fully aware of how difficult that one is.
Yeah, we're certainly getting caught up in a bit of pay me now or pay me later. And so because the infrastructure perhaps wasn't kept up with, we are coming up with, you know, with a $40 million project. So let me, we have another, um, the, 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 member Stokel.
Yep. Uh, member Nelson kind of touched on what I was going to say. I hear you. I, I mentioned in every budget cycle too, I wish we could lower taxes as well. One of the things that I have been pushing for and I'm glad to see is lowering our military. And that's able to happen as we get more development in our place. Like, so one of the ways we can do it is increase revenues. We do that through industries and businesses. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this where we're trying to do that. We have, I think it's around 15 million in grants right now. Getting grants, alternative funding, hoping to get some state appropriations. Um, you mentioned the top three things, lagoon and reducing taxes. And to member Nelson's point, we could sit up here and say, no, 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 which is I think what prior councils did. And we're paying for that right now. We would have more sewer spills in the lagoon. We would have people complaining about flooding. Like, things would happen, but we could say we didn't, we didn't raise taxes. That can happen. And that's what I really spend a lot of time on, quite frankly. And I'm always saying to the city manager, can we just lower it a little bit more? Is there anything we can do? And we have those discussions. Um, so just know we're trying. This one is proposed at 3.5. It could, we could have set it at 10%, but thankfully we built it lower. Um, and we are lowering our military. And I'm hopeful as like tranquility shores, that development happens and we're getting additional revenue in, that we can kind of lower it. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from. So I hear you. I want to get there and I'm hopeful that we can, are gradually making progress. But we're balancing that out with large, large infrastructure projects. So thank you for sharing though.
Uh, member Cole.
Yeah, Nathan, you know, you're a very thoughtful person and I, and I understand where you're coming from. But as a council, well, I can't talk for the council. I'll talk for me. Uh, when I look at the budget, I look at the budget in a way that I want to make sure that we provide the services that we're supposed to provide for the city. And I'm another one that's big on infrastructures because I, I've done that all my life. And it's not exotic, but it's not something that you see. And you have to convince people that it's something you have to spend money on. I was a vice president at the University of Dayton and as such, I had facilities under me and I had to convince the board of trustees that although they couldn't see the infrastructure, the infrastructure was something we had to do. It's not a brand new building. It's not any of those things. I guarantee you that we are thoughtful, very thoughtful when we produce the budget. You know, we're thinking about the citizens and thinking about the increases that we put in, but we're also thoughtful and mindful that there are things we have to do to provide these things to our citizens. But I thank you for your input and I always enjoy talking to you.
I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, I've, if you'll allow me, I think there's been a little bit of a misunderstanding. Under no circumstances do I think any of you have not thought about this. Do I, I do not under any way think someone is not thoughtful, not talking with the city manager, not talking with the directors of our departments. But for anyone who has read history and read their history books, the reason Cortez was so successful was because when he landed, he told his people to burn the boats. We go home when we succeed. Being thoughtful is not enough sometimes. We have to take chances and risk. And now I understand mitigating risk and managing risk is important, which is why I came up here and instead of saying wipe off property taxes and being crazy, I said, let's aim for 6.0 mileage rate and find out what that mathematic comes to. Setting tentative does not make it happen. We have another hearing on the 26th and I would love to see a presentation just to see what it looks like. And maybe you say, oh, well, 6.0 gets us this, but it's not quite enough. We need more infrastructure. Let's go with 6.31. Well, that's still less than the rollback rate. But we will not know until it's on the screen and we see the math. Until we hear from the department heads to see what is this going to look like in their departments.
And Nathan, I, and I got that. I thought that was thoughtful. You clearly, you came up with a number and I get that. That's a goal. Um, and, and that alone, instead of getting up there and saying, we need to lower taxes, blah, blah, blah. You didn't do that. So I, I appreciate that. I, and I think it was stated up here pretty good. Um, you know, the biggest problem I see is that it's not even a problem. It's we got to have the infrastructure. We've got to stop playing with it. We've got to do what it takes. And, uh, and, and as member Stokel said, there was just a lot of previous, I shouldn't say I don't want to get into previous councils, but it just hasn't been done properly. And we're, we, you know, I think everybody understands that's a problem with the lagoon and with people's sewage and with people's flooding. We have to get that taken care of. But at the same time, I certainly think that, uh, the thought that you came up with, hey, let's look at this number just to see what it does. I get that and I appreciate you. Nathan, always good to hear from you.
Thank you.
Next card.
Trenton Mansfield.
Hey, Trenton. Trenton Mansfield, Penn Tax Avenue, Titusville resident. Um, really didn't prepare a speech, but, uh, it's the same thing it is every year. Um, it's about the renters. Uh, my taxes have not gone up substantially over the past eight years I've lived here in Titusville, but it's about the renters, the renters, renters, renters. Um, it's 29% of non-homesteaded homes are properties here in the city of Titusville. I don't know exactly how many are renters. I did do some research and I'll probably have some stuff, um, when I come back, um, as far as, because the last, at the budget workshop, there was a guy here that said his taxes were low. And that's cute. I mean, his taxes may be low and there are people in this city with their taxes low, but the people that have bought their homes in the max, past four years, their taxes are not low, not even close to being low. Some people are paying on a $300,000 house or paying $1,500 a month just for the city of Titusville. Um, just some ways to cut, um, the city manager, does he get a performance evaluation increase this year too? That's just a question I have. Um, can we see his performance evaluations? Um, I got some notes here, um, that I've been taking throughout the thing. Um, the, the taxes are out of control, but the insurance rates are also out of control. My wife's an insurance agent and people complain constantly about their auto and home insurance. And it's just, just, just questions. I mean, I, 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 I understand y'all go through the budget, but can we set it, like Nathan said, I mean, can we set it lower to see, just, just speculate to see where we could possibly go. And the dollar is lower because of the printer. The printer printed and people took those printed monies. I mean, PPP loans, every, all them loans, all that free money, everybody was, it was like, it was like Oprah Winfrey up there. I mean, that's just the way it was. Um, and the ADA compliance. We will never be ADA compliant, ever, ever. But that doesn't mean that the citizens shouldn't be able to see it. Okay? I, I encourage you to go look at other city websites and look at their stuff. Um, let's see. As far as live streaming the meetings, the TEC, the budget workshops, we didn't just live stream the budget workshop. I live streamed it. But there's over a hundred thousand dollars worth of AV equipment in here. These lights, I know y'all didn't buy the cheapest lights around. These lights are not cheap. The, the controller that controls the lights are not cheap. It's DMX controller. And y'all are probably running it off of a computer system, software system that's not cheap. I've been in that room back there. That, that room is high tech. Those cameras, those cameras are over $3,000 apiece. So we have the system and we use YouTube. YouTube is a free service. You push start stream and you control them with it, with AV stick. It's super simple. I mean, and y'all are the council. Y'all can tell the city manager what to do. He works for you. He doesn't work for us. He works for you guys. Y'all tell him what to do. So, um, and I hear people say, I hear you, I hear you, I hear you. Um, and we talk about achieving goals. Um, but are we achieving the goals? Is it just a word? Is it just a speech that we're, we have this goal out in front of us, but we're not hitting the mark? And another question is about infrastructure. I hear it all the time. Every year, like this year, it's going to be 1.6 million more dollars. And last year, I, I forget what it was, but it was well over a million dollars. Where did, when we finish a project and then we add another 1.6 million dollars on to, where does, when that project ends, where does that money that was used for that project, where does it, where does it roll into? Um, so that's all I really got to say. I, I do have to plan to have a better presentation next time. I mean, I've been working crazy hours now that I'm back to work. Um, but we have raised taxes like people have said before. Um, I got the numbers here. 2017 was 8.26% above rollback rate. 2018 was 9.9, 19% above rollback rate. 19 was 3.01% rollback rate. 20 was rollback rate. Um, 21 was 5.19% above rollback rate. 22 was 9.81% above rollback rate. And 23 was 6.08% above rollback rate. Can the citizens have a break? Can the citizens have a break? And I get it. Y'all, y'all have a hard job to do, very hard job to do. And but y'all set the mileage. Y'all tell the city manager what to do. We can't tell him what to do. We've read, we, we, we elect you guys to tell them what to do. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Trenton.
Um, I just had a comment.
I'm sorry.
It's not really. Just to give you some context a little bit, Trenton, it takes a lot of money to run a city.
You don't have to sit here and lecture me.
No, I want, I want you to understand.
No, I totally understand.
We have the oldest city hall in the county. I have come into city hall and there are tiles falling from the ceiling. This is what is last priority and it's, I, I feel horrible that our employees have to work in conditions of coming to an office flooding. But we are continuously doing infrastructure projects. So when you say, okay, when we finish that project, where does that money go? It goes to another infrastructure project and another infrastructure project. I, I wish it wasn't that way, but that is what is happening.
I wish I could take a video of my working conditions.
Okay.
I wish I could. I wish I could because people would be astonished. Thank you.
Uh, next card.
Last card is Tom Perez.
Tom Perez, Washington Avenue. Um, making a very short statement. I just wanted to come up here and let you know that I support many of those that preceded me. Okay? We are concerned citizens. We are trying to work with the city. Okay? Pointing things out. But, you know, remember that we really, or you're here, hopefully listen to us and, and do things that are supportive of your citizens. Okay? Um, most of the things that Kristen rattled off, many of them don't cost anything. Literally, you have everything in place. It's just like throwing a switch, like the previous person said. You know, and people want to feel like they're being listened to. And it doesn't take much. But yet transparency isn't available to us? Why? That's a good question to ask. I mean, it shouldn't be hard to do that. It would allow for more citizen involvement. Maybe somebody's afraid of that. Okay? It would allow for more citizen involvement. Maybe somebody's afraid of that, okay? We're bringing things to your attention that you need to know about. But you're the only ones, because you're in the positions that you've been elected to, that can do anything about it. And I can't sit down without saying, oh, by the way, you know, we could have saved $165,000 by not continuing this, this legal lawsuit against, speak of Titusville. That's 165,000. Two judges have already said, hey, you know, give it up. And we continue. Next Thursday, we'll have an appeal. It'll probably take some months before that goes into place, but I have no doubt, never did, that it would happen. We did our work. We did what we needed to do in order to prepare for what we knew was coming, just like we're doing now for the state amendment. We know that it's going to be challenged because there are a lot of, I guess, people that aren't interested in this kind of stuff for a good reason, money. Anyway, I don't want to take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We've received one more card.
Okay.
I believe it's C-O-T-E-N.
You can clear that up when you get up here.
Hi, my name's Kason Childs, 476 Fern Avenue. Like many of my other citizens here, we've seen nothing but inflation due from, you know, the federal government increasing loans, and they move it up and down. But what we can control is the city's inflation for taxes and other municipalities. The main issue that we have here in Titusville is infrastructure. But the main thing that I continuously see is the money keeps going up, but there's not much infrastructure being fixed. So, and what I mean by that is you guys say you have tons of infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure projects, but it's, it's, it's still collapsing. And we're doing projects for roads, but we're not checking the surrounding drainage. Just last week on Fern and Elder, a couple sinkholes caused the road to collapse, and they had to shut down the intersection. It's still waiting to be paved. But they managed to go in there, and instead of replacing the whole pipe, they just patched it instead. And that's, all that's going to end up doing is causing them to have to go back and replace more of the pipe or patch it again, causing us more money, more fine, and more taxes. So I went through one of the, the, whatever it's called, the things they showed up on the TV for the average cost for the water taxes going up. And one thing I'm noticing is the amount of people that live, the population of the cities. And it's, it's kind of hard to see from all this, but it's just a simple Google search. Take that chart that you guys had displayed and write down what the population is of each of the cities. Titusville, from just, it may not be current, but just the same year for population growth, was 49,000 roughly. And from the same years of all the other cities, counties that was displayed, what I'm seeing is ours is going up steadily. And while we are not as big as some of these other cities, the prices for their taxes are staying steady in comparison with their population, but ours is, is not staying the same. And that's, that's pretty much, we're spending money on things we don't need to. If you were to run it like a business, like I know some of you guys know how to run a business, what happens if you don't have enough money? You either take out a loan, or you cut the budget, or you balance it. You can't spend more money than what you have. So just because you raise the taxes doesn't mean that you're going to be able to fix the problem, because you're spending money on paying people more when the problem's not being fixed. So I'll open up for questions.
Member Nelson.
You were talking about infrastructure. Tell me your name again.
Kason.
Kason.
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, I want to pick on you. I mean, I know some of the infrastructure projects that we've done, one being the sewer plant, which was, if I remember right, was $13 million upgrading the sewer plant. Am I right? Am I close?
30 years ago, yeah. That's probably about right.
No, that's the last upgrade.
For a blue hair. Oh, the Osprey upgrade, yes.
Right. Was how much money?
Around 13 million.
Oh, 13 million?
Roughly, yes.
Not 1,300?
No, 13.
I wish. And then the, getting the sewer pipes off the river. I don't know if people realized this. The sewer pipes actually ran along the river.
So I'm not looking for an education. I'm just looking for questions. What you might have for me. I'm telling you how, how I see everything is. And what I want is questions for what you think I can do or what you, you guys have questions on, what I think you guys can improve on. No, I'm not looking for.
I thought you were asking, you know, what have you, what are you doing with money?
Yeah, so.
Okay, then I apologize.
So, any other questions?
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that was it? All right, this is why it's certainly guidance here. City attorney.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance you'll need to do is address the millage, which is ordinance 202024.
Nelson, get ready.
So when you first adopt a tentative millage, you'll need to state what the mills are, the percentage increase above the rollback rate, and the service millage. So, yeah, unless you want to address the budget. If you want to make amendments to the budget, you would need to do that, and then you would recalculate your millage. If you're not going to make changes to the budget, then the first thing we'll do is adopt tentative millage. Dean will adopt a tentative budget.
I think everything here says adopt tentative millage. So that, to me, would be something to do here and perhaps look for discussion for those that would like to see us do something different as we move to the next meeting. So that's just my feeling about it. I don't see any lights lit up, so I'm thinking that we could have you read the tentative millage rate.
I tend to agree, and I think we're making small adjustments to the budget. I wouldn't think that would be a huge problem.
Right. I would say that we move forward with all this and have discussions as we, you know, as city managers, we go.
So I move to adopt a tentative millage rate of 6.5817 mills, which is 3.9% increase above the rollback rate of 6.3536 mills, and to adopt a tentative voted debt service millage at .1936 mill.
City attorney, is that a solid motion?
Sure. I just want to clarify that the 6.5817 mills is a 3.59% increase above the rollback rate.
Yeah, I was going to second with that change, yes.
3.59?
Percent increase above the rollback rate of 6.3536 mills.
I said it.
And adopting the tentative voted debt service millage at .1936 mills. Is that correct?
Okay, with that.
Second.
Corrected or put in there correctly. Thank you very much. We'll take, we have a motion and a second by Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Tentatively passes unanimously.
And I'd state that the percentage increase above the rollback rate is a percentage increase in property taxes tentatively adopted by the city council.
Okay, we need another motion, correct?
Next, you'll need to adopt a tentative budget.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to adopt the tentative general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2025 in ordinance number 29-2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yeah.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, tentatively passes unanimously, city, you know, city manager. City attorney, want to move us to the next one?
Yes, now we'll need to open the public hearing on ordinance 302024.
Okay, call cards.
One card. It's Trenton Mansfield.
Thank you. Any other cards?
I think I've seen a hand.
Kristen Lorti, a few budget comments. Coca resident advocate for, with Brevard Care Citizens Coalition. And I just wanted to make a few quick comments. One of them is that the millage, now that you have set that, can go down at the next hearing. It just can't go up without doing a whole bunch of stuff. So you still could go down, making sure that the room and everyone is aware of that. The next thing on the budget that I wanted to note is that on the revenue summary, page 12, it says that the impact fees have gone down 96.35% from $2,466,379 in FY 2024 to $90,000 in FY 2025. And there's a lot of talk about the impact fees and the impacts of not having those. And residents regularly bring this up at meetings. I know the city is having a study right now of impact fees, so I've seen that go by. But it is curious that we would be going down and having that budget change on the impact fees. Another item on the budget, and a prior speaker had talked about it, and has to do with the city manager budget. And it has the, an increase right now FY change between the years of 3.5%. And the question that I have is, is does that include the performance increase? Because last year, Mr. Larisse got a both a performance increase and a cost of living increase. So he got two separate increases that equal the $25,000 of his salary. And so the question is, is does he also get a performance increase this year? And a prior speaker, Mr. Trenton, had asked about the performance evaluation, which people are interested in. They're interested in the accountability and what's going on in Titusville, and there has been a lot of interest generated in this topic. And I think it's a fair question for the public to wonder about both the city manager's office and the city attorney's office. These are both high-dollar offices, very visible positions, and we would like to know more. I have done an inquiry on, have gotten the evaluations for the city manager, but I actually don't know when they take place, or if they take place, or if you just send him documents. There's no visibility to this. And when we're talking about the budget, we're talking about accountability. The citizens would like to know. So I think it's a fair question that a prior commenter and myself had asked about this topic. So I have also put in a separate card for 2024. But those are a few additional budget observations that I should, think should be considered and answered. Is anybody available to answer those? Impact fees and city manager, city attorney budgets and performance evaluations.
Anybody that would answer that, or?
I will speak on performance evaluations. It is a very transparent process. It happens every year around October. They are in our agenda packets. They are all public knowledge, so they've been there, so.
Is it an agenda item that's discussed at a meeting?
It is under the city manager's report. They are public. You can see them, they've been public. So I don't, I don't know what else to tell.
They have been available to the public, is what you're saying, but are they publicly discussed under the city manager's agenda item?
If council chooses to discuss.
But if they don't, then it's invisible to the public. Would that be?
It's not, that would not be.
It's available, but it is not visible during a meeting. And what, and when does that happen in that city manager? When is that? Is it October? Is it September? Which, I'm sorry, I'm listening. Okay, so we don't know then, so I'm leaving, not knowing.
It happens in October.
Thank you.
It's an individual thing that we do. We don't discuss, I don't discuss what, how I rate the city manager. She doesn't discuss with me how she rates him. It's an individual thing, and it's in the packet, so that there is transparency. There's nothing that we discuss to determine, oh, we're going to give him a good rating on this one, or we're going to give him a bad rating. It's an individual thing. It's how I feel.
Some cities have a public discussion, so I'm learning.
This city doesn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And the impact fees, can someone answer that? Why are the impact fees going down 96.35% this year?
Go ahead, Kevin.
If you look at the revised budget, the current year budget had a nearly $2.4 million influx from our impact fees that are housed in Brevard County for road impact fees. So that transfer throws the percentage off greatly as you move forward, because that is a, compared to the year before, the actuals are 214,000. So $2.4 million influx of road impact fees that we got a disbursement changes that percentage greatly.
It's still going down from 214,000 the year before. So we're from 214,000, then if you just leave out 2024, now we're at the 90,000. We're still over half reduction. So, and we have many projects in the pipeline. 60 projects and they're open.
We conservatively budget that because we never know from year to year what it's going to be. And so it's just a number that we work in based on what we think we might get. You don't ever want to over-budget revenues, because if you don't get them, you're spending money on revenues you're not getting.
Got it. I have one follow-up question that I forgot to ask. But I'm also interested in when you guys get records fees, where that is housed in the budget. So when there's fees that are charged to the public for records, access to records, what part of the budget line item is added? Does Ms. Wells know? Does city manager know?
It's not a budget item. It's the cost recoverable for that service.
Cost recoverable.
But it's nowhere in the budget materials then? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk? All right, continue on.
So I think I'm here. I move to adopt the tentative enterprise fund capital improvement program and related budgets.
I believe, well, just a second.
Go back.
That, that was the public hearing on ordinance 302024. Next, we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 312024, which is the solid waste rates, et cetera.
City clerk.
We have one card. It's Trenton Mansfield.
Thank you, Trenton. Member Nelson.
Now it would be appropriate to poke the public hearing on ordinance 322024, which is the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budgets for the city.
One card. It's Kristen Lorti.
I swear I don't remember all these stops along the way.
Kristen Lorti, and on this item, I was curious because I don't see anything on the website on it, and I don't see, there's 27 pages of the documentation that's available in the packet on the website. And I don't see where this is. And I really think these materials should be made available. And so now that you've received the comment of what is not on the website, that can be immediately updated by the city so that residents have the access. So I have added access under Brevard Care Citizens Coalition. I have posted some of these backup documents to help citizens. But, you know, the city could pick it up here and make sure that the information is available. And I would like that, because I can't even see anything, at least on the water. You know, some of these other ones on the water and sewer, you have added the rates in, the proposed rates into the 27 pages, even though we don't have the same information that we saw earlier. I would really encourage the city to put that, but I would like to know where it is on, you know, that the public, is the only way to have seen this, for this ordinance to have made a special request to the city. That's my question. Because I, before you answer, I would say, you're adopting the enterprise funds and capital improvements programs of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2025. That sounds very interesting. People might, you know, really want to peruse that and understand it and comment on it. But if the materials aren't available to the public, it's hard to get relevant comments back. So I am. it's hard to get relevant comments back. So, I am interested.
It's in the proposed budget?
Yeah, on, in the 203 pages?
Yes.
So, is there narrative on it? Okay, there's not. Because in the proposed budget, so, you know, the, the, there's lots of numbers in the budget. There's actually not that much narrative. So, on the budget side, you can see, um, different informations broken out by department. You can compare year over year. And that's very helpful to people once they open the budget. But I did not see on that, on the capital improvements. But if that were added, then the link back into the agenda materials and made available to the public so that it's, I, I think this is the kind of stuff we should put press releases out, Facebook posts, let's all get the facts, right? And, and I'm finding that there's opportunities here. So, it, so you're saying that it is in, in the budget, um, 203 pages, which is not available right now in the agenda materials?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We good? All right, member Nelson?
I moved to adopt the tentative general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2025 in ordinance number 29-2024.
It's.
Second. Ordinance 3220. We did.
322024.
You did, you already adopted.
Already did that.
The tentative general related budgets of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2025 in ordinance 292024. That was your previous motion. This would be a motion to approve the tentative enterprise fund capital improvement program related budgets for the city for fiscal year 2025 in ordinance number 322024.
Okay, sorry. I moved to adopt the tentative enterprise fund capital improvement program and related budgets of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2025 in ordinance number 322024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
You did.
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passage unanimously, city manager.
We do, we need to announce the date for the final public hearing.
That's why I said city manager.
Yep. 26th at, uh, 5:30 in Council Chamber.
Announce the date of the final public hearing. I think you said it several times, September 26, 2024 at 5:30 PM, right here. And that ends this, correct? Okay. We don't do meetings like this very often. All right, this meeting is adjourned until the next one.
Actually, on your, on the front of your agenda, you have petitions.
What?
Actually, on the front of your agenda, you have petitions from the public.
Whatever you just said, it's too late.